Okay. Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting of November 28th of the Montecito Planning Commission to order, and would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all around.
Thank you. We'll now have the TV coverage announcement, and then the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A planning commission, Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County San Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20 and 9 a.m. in the south coast, Long Pocong, San Inez Valley, Senri and Orchid areas. Re-broadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website as well as the county's YouTube web page, and will be available for download in a day or two. Now for the roll call, Commissioner Keller.
Present.
Commissioner Sinahara.
Present.
Commissioner Kupiak.
Here.
Chair Newman.
Present.
And for the record, Commissioner Cole is absent today.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed to the Agenda and Status Report.
Good morning, Chair Newman, members of the Commission. In regards to the status of the agenda, we have two items on the standard agenda. The continuance of the appeal for the Willfong retaining wall that was heard at our last hearing is on the standard agenda to be considered by the Planning Commission today. And then we do have the Thomas Fire and Debris Flow update as a regular item on the agenda. We did have a request that we take at least a portion of that update for Mr. Frye to come and provide his update before we get into the appeal item, just so he can meet his other commitments that he has. So if that, if the Commission would like to do that, we can make that change to the agenda. If we could trail other items on the Thomas Fire and Debris Flow till after the appeal, if we have other things we need to talk about, otherwise we just ask that Mr. Frye have a few minutes at the beginning to answer some questions from the last hearing.
Okay, fine. Thank you. We will do that. Let's go to the projection report.
So on the projection report, the item of note is on December 5th is the Holiday Luncheon, which is joint between the Montecito Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission, and that is at 11:30 a.m. at the Opal Restaurant. I think invitations have been sent out. And then any responses, please get back to David Villalobos on that. And then our next hearing date is December 19th. There's one item projected for that hearing date at this moment.
All right, thank you. We'll now move to public comment. Is there anybody in the public who has any matter they'd like to comment on that is not on today's agenda?
Mr. Chair, I think that there was one person who wanted to speak, and she left for a moment to move her car.
No, actually, that was for item one.
Oh, it was. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay. Any, any comments from the public? All right. If not, then we'll close public comment. Let's go then next to planning commissioners and formal reports. Does anybody have anything to report? Commissioner Keller?
Yes, actually, I spoke to staff as to whether or not this would be the appropriate time to raise some concerns, and I would like to publicly and openly express some concerns that I have about what I feel is a lack of process in terms of involving the Montecito Planning Commission for things that are occurring in our community. We are a group that is pledged to uphold the community plan, and it appears to me that not only are reports being made, but decisions are being made by groups that don't have either the obligation of upholding the community plan, or the charge of being a, an official group bound by Brown Act regulations, et cetera, such as we are. I mean, we are nominated by our supervisor and approved by the Board of Supervisors, and our meetings are open and televised, and I feel that this is how transparent public process should occur. So I'm reading about some major developments in our community, such as the, the new debris nets that are being proposed, such as the Board of Supervisors unanimously voting to support and pursue the, a new debris basin, such as a microgrid that's occurring, none of which have been even reported on to the Planning Commission, much less asked for our input. And it would seem that all of these projects would benefit by some informational give and take, especially the Board of Architectural Review would seem appropriate to get involved with both of these issues. And yet, we have not been in any way approached, updated, or informed, whereas other private groups have been. And it's especially disturbing in view of the fact that in January, we very carefully held an election, and Commissioner Newman and I were appointed to the Special Montecito Recovery Strategic Plan Commission, or whatever it was that was going to be called, that never once convened, and this resulted actually in the resignation of a commissioner so she could also serve on this group. This was the group that was, our understanding was going to be the center and the, the clearinghouse for ideas such as are now being appointed, all of which are very good ideas, but they seem to be coming from different sources that are independently funded, independently self-selected, and have nothing to do with the kind of process that I believe is very important for our community. So I don't know if these developments are as a result of the blessing of our supervisor who has chosen to bypass his appointed commission and committee, or if they occur as a result of the planning department stepping in and taking, getting involved in certain areas, or this has just been de facto. And if that's the case, then I think we need to pick up the slack and see why this has occurred and why we have been left out of the loop. And I just feel that, for example, our appeal as agenda item number one is a perfect example of the shortcomings and failures of the like-for-like rebuilding process that happened after the, the T-Fire. And we tried very hard to have input in the current like-for-like, but now the, both the Planning Commission and the Board of Architectural Review have been excluded from that process. And I feel that these bodies have a great deal to contribute, a great deal of knowledge that could benefit everyone. And I would very much like to make sure that this is rectified and see if there's some way of really informing, involving, and including us in a lot of these important decisions being made about our community.
All right, thank you. Any other, I'm sorry, any other planning commissioners' informational thoughts?
I would just like to support what Commissioner Keller just spoke to. The issues have concerned me also over the past year, and I have made efforts in, in attempting to get information that other organizations seems, seems to acquire. And I just received letters saying, "This is not the time to come before you." So whereas they come to other organizations, the county. So I do, I do believe this is a, an issue that perhaps we could get some direction from, from PND to how best to inform us, perhaps as a regular agenda item. Thank you.
May we just ask if there is any response at this time from the planning department?
Well, let me, before you do.
Sorry.
I think the comments of my colleagues and my own thoughts are similar. The fundamental issue is one of jurisdiction. What does our Planning Commission have lawful responsibility for? Many of the things that Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Sinahara have spoken to are matters of grace, if you will, with other departments, other things that are occurring in the county being outside of our legal jurisdiction, but nevertheless affecting our community. So it is, as I've come to appreciate even during my short tenure, a bit of a tightrope here. And I share the disappointment in that as a matter of grace, as opposed to right, that we do not have a greater information flow, and we do not have greater public participation and so on at the Montecito Planning Commission as opposed to other venues. But our last meeting, for instance, was an exception to that when thankfully Caltrans and Public Works appeared, even though those are projects over which we do not yet have any jurisdiction. So I think, I share the sentiment that we would like to have the stature of our commission, the availability of public comment, participation, and so on, made available for issues of concern to the community, even if they're outside our jurisdiction. But on the other hand, I recognize as a matter of law and under the charter and whatnot, we have limited jurisdiction. So if staff wants to add to that, that would be fine, and then I'd like to move on the agenda.
May I just add one quick thing, please? I only wanted to say that the public perception, fortunately, is that we are a planning entity, and that we are the ones that make planning decisions about Montecito. And I know that isn't, as Mr. Newman has said, necessarily our entire jurisdiction, but it would be very important to have us be the clearinghouse or the, at least a forum for these. And, and if that's possible, that would be what I would request.
Sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so you raised kind of a wide spectrum of things that I think you'd like to hear about. I can't really comment on what happened with Supervisor Williams' group. I think you'd have to speak to him about that. And then the like-for-like ordinance did go through your commission and to the board, and decisions were made at the board level. So I think those are sort of board decisions that have occurred. We're not trying to withhold information from you, just to be really clear from the public. I was going to report on microgrids today as part of my director's report because I believe that that question came up last time. We've not been approached. So I'm going to tell you what I can, what you can find in the public domain, which is, you know, some newspaper articles. But we have not been approached, nor were we approached or consulted with on the debris basin issue. And, you know, there are other parts of the county that perhaps need to be reminded that the Montecito Planning Commission has an interest in some of these issues. So, so part of the reason we're not bringing things forward is because we're, we're really not in that circle of decision-making, or it's, it's not even at a point where people have approached us about a permit process. The debris nets is a different issue, and we have an emergency permit that was submitted to the department. And that emergency permit is under my jurisdiction, and I have to make a decision about that. And then your, your commission will be with jurisdiction on the follow-up permit to, to actually formally permit the debris nets and any additional debris nets that may occur or want to occur in the future. We didn't bring that to the commission because we didn't want to, we didn't want to influence your ultimate decision-making authority on that. But I can talk a little bit about it today if, if you'd like as part of the director's report. And then I think, you know, if there are specific things that you want us to report on every time we meet, we do have an update on the, I don't seem to have the right agenda in front of me. Yes, I do. An update on the Thomas Fire and debris flow rebuilding process. And so if there's something you want to hear about that we don't know a whole lot about, we'll try and gather as much information or ask people to come. I think that's the best way to handle it. But I don't want you to feel like we're intentionally holding back information. We're just not necessarily in the, the loop on all of those things as well. And we want to preserve your discretion on projects that you'll have authority over in the future.
You didn't mention the debris basin.
Commissioner Keller, just a brief.
I beg your pardon. The debris basin?
Yeah, I did mention that. I mean, I said, "We, we really weren't in the loop on the permit, you know, permitting or approving of debris basin expansions." And maybe that's something John can talk about today, and, and in the future, is any other flood control improvements that they are undertaking or wanting to undertake to address issues. But I think, just, just ask us, and we'll do the best we can to provide information to the commission. It's hard for me to control what outside parties do with the Montes, with other groups in the community. I can assure you, they're not decision-making groups. They may provide input, but they aren't decision-making groups. So the decision-makers in this county are your commission, the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, and that's how it will remain.
Okay, thank you. Continuing on then with the agenda, we'll, we'll move next to item nine, the minutes of October 17. Do any of the commissioners have any additions, corrections to the minutes? I do have one to offer with respect to item three on the Thomas Fire. After the first sentence, I would like the record to note, as we did say, that the Montecito Planning Commission also expressed appreciation for the acceptance by the Caltrans and Public Works Department of the invitation to advise the commission on the status of those projects, so that our appreciation is of record. And I'll ask staff and perhaps counsel for advice here. There was a question raised at our meeting and directed to Caltrans, which they did then respond to by email. And I'm wondering whether we might put in a parenthetical and add that by email, Caltrans advised that emergency services and bridge construction personnel have coordinated to ensure access on any transversible bridge. The question that was raised was whether a bridge which is structurally transversible but not yet open to public transportation could be used in an emergency, and that was answered in a subsequent email. So I think adding that parenthetically would be an appropriate addition to the record unless there's a issue with doing that.
May I just ask, the email was sent to whom? Oh, I thought you were recognizing me. Who received the email?
I received it, and I believe it was circulated to all members of the commission. All right.
Chair Newman, members of the Commission, in response to that, we can add, as you suggested, a parenthetical. It would just be noted that it wasn't part of the action, but it was just information received in response to that hearing.
Correct. All right. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the additions suggested.
I so move.
Second?
I second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. The minutes are approved as directed. Director's report and Supervisor's hearing summary, please.
Sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, since your last meeting, the Board of Supervisors has met twice, and they met on Tuesday, November 6th, and the most notable item on that day was the Coastal Resiliency Project. And the Board did take conceptual action to approve with some modifications to the recommendation that was forwarded from the Montec, or from the County Planning Commission, and that was a three-to-two vote. And the notable changes that they requested were, going to sound pretty familiar to your commission, because they were really reflective of your commission's recommendations. The Board directed that we use the high sea level rise scenario for coastal resiliency, that we report every five years rather than every 10 years. They directed several, what I would consider to be minor policy wording changes. And then they also directed that we add a requirement that findings under Public Resources Code Section 30260 be made when obtaining a permit for coastal-dependent industry. So I'm sure those all sound familiar. We are in the process of preparing the amendment with those changes for the Board's action on December 11th.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to that. When is it submitted to the Coastal Commission? Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Sinahara, so we have an item proposed on December 11th, which is a submittal resolution for the Coastal Resiliency Project and another amendment that we're working with on agricultural employee dwelling units. And so we intend to submit that to the, to the Coastal Commission before the end of the year.
And by way of further information, Commissioner Sinahara, I'm advised, and the record reflects, that PND staff here has been in touch with staff for the Coastal Commission and did receive some, some input, but that the Board of Supervisors, in essence, took the matter forward until the December 11th meeting. So it has not yet gone back, back up. Commissioner Keller, you have a comment?
Yes, a three-to-vote. Can you summarize the objections of the two supervisors to approving it? It seemed like we felt very strongly in favor of it, and I'm wondering if there were issues raised that we weren't aware of.
If I may? If I may, having attended the meeting, I can perhaps answer that generically and say that I think there were two supervisors that were not of the view that greenhouse gas emissions are causal of sea level rise and/or that sea level rise is going to approximate the higher limits that their colleagues adopted.
Any further comment from staff on that?
Well, I think Chair Newman summarized it accurately. I think there were really two different reasons from the two dissenting supervisors. One thought that the moderate sea level rise scenario would be a more appropriate scenario, and I think would have supported that. And the other, I don't think would have supported anything on sea level rise. Anyway, so stay tuned, December 11, and then we'll get that package to the Coastal Commission, and we'll see how long it takes them to process it. But, you know, hopefully sometime next year that'll go. And then the other hearing was on November 13. There wasn't anything on the 13th agenda specifically that would affect the Montecito community or the work of your commission, but we did have the agricultural employee dwelling ordinance on. That's not something that's being adopted into the Montecito Land Use and Development Code that affects the coastal zoning ordinance and the inland land use and development code. And that will also be going back on December 11. So something that your commission may be interested in is the Coastal Commission will be taking up the amendment for wetlands, the wetland issue associated with the Highway 101 and Santa Claus Lane bike path. The wetlands and the bike path are obviously in the carpenteria, excuse me, carpenteria, summerland area. And we did process an amendment through the Board of Supervisors. That the Coastal Commission will be taking that up at their hearing in December. And I think that's the only thing on December. They did approve the Montecito Design Guidelines Phase Two as a minor amendment, so that's in effect. I think that happened since the last planning, Montecito Planning Commission hearing. And one other announcement about sort of an upcoming board hearing is on December 4. Unfortunately, it's in Santa Maria, but you can watch on TV. The department is going to be getting a CSAC award for the interactive map that we prepared for the fires and the debris flow. And it's a pretty significant award, and so I'm really proud of the people who worked on that in the department. I think it's been a good tool for the community.
Okay. Well, thank you for the report and congratulations on the award.
Thanks. Then I have just two other things that I can touch on. I can talk just slightly about the microgrid project. Like I said earlier, we have not been approached about the project. It seems very conceptual at this point, and it's not even clear to me if permits will be required for the project at all, because I just don't really exactly understand how at least the first phase is going to work. But my understanding is that the intention is to install renewable energies, likely solar panels, on the Montecito Water District facilities and the fire headquarters so that those facilities can be maintained if something were to happen on the grid. And that's almost all I know. So there may be somebody else on the commission who knows a bit more, but as it evolves, we'll let you know, and we'll let you know if there's, you know, any permits that will be before your commission. But it sounds like an exciting project.
Commissioner Keller, a brief comment?
Yes, just a question, the CSAP award is, what is that?
CSAP, I always have to remind myself of what it stands for. California State Association of Counties. So it's an association of all of the counties in the state of California. And they go through a process where they accept nominations for awards and then grant awards. And this one is an award for innovation. So it was pretty cool.
Thank you. I appreciate your clarifying because that's very impressive.
Yeah.
Question, apparently, in a closed hearing, the Board of Supervisors did vote to pursue negotiations for purchasing properties on Randall Road for the construction of the debris basin. Are you invited to those closed sessions, and is that anything you can report on?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, if I were invited to attend a closed session, I would not be able to report on it because closed session is confidential. The county council reports out any reportable actions, but I couldn't tell you about the discussions. And no, I was not invited to that.
I'm just wondering why it was in the newspaper if you weren't allowed to report on it.
I think they just reported out the action that the board took, but not the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sennour has a quick comment?
I just want to laud the, your department for the mapping. You are well-deserved. It was a great community service, and I think it is greatly appreciated and informs so, so much along the spectrum of helping residents in the community to recover. So it's a really demonstratable document and effort, and really, it took a long time. I know it went through many iterations and still, I'm sure, is going through iterations. And anyway, much appreciation. Are you finished with your report?
No, I have two more things. So the, let's see, I'm going to end with a bang, so I'm going to, so I'll talk just briefly about the debris nets. So we, I mentioned before that the department has received an application for an emergency permit for debris nets. And the intention is that the debris nets would be installed prior to, hopefully, significant rain this winter. That's the intention. We are processing 13 nets in the county under the emergency permit, and we're in the process of doing an evaluation of the nets and their consistency with the comp plan and any conditions that might need to be attached to those. And hopefully, we'll be making a decision within the next week or so. We're waiting for a little bit of information. We're also coordinating with other state and federal agencies on the permit process. So the California Department of Fish and Wildlife is involved, Army Corps of Engineers is involved, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We did put out a notice, oh, I don't remember exactly when, but for a two-week period to receive public comments, because if we have time to do that, then the ordinance requires that we do so. And so we have gotten quite a few comments from a variety of perspectives on the nets, and we'll be taking those into consideration as we move forward and make a decision on the nets.
Commissioner Sennour, let me just preface a recognition of you. Perhaps we ought to await Mr. Fry's discussion if you...
I just have a brief question. Is, as far as public comment, is that posted anywhere on your website? Is there a way you can access that? Generally, that's available.
Yeah, I don't think we've posted, Commissioner Sennour, I don't believe we've posted.
Do you have any intention of doing that?
I don't think we thought of it.
Yeah. Commissioner Sennour, through the chair, we did the newspaper ads, as well as, I think, to put it out there. We have not, at this point, put it on the website or directed anybody to the website to interact on that one.
I think that might be helpful. If you could look into that. Again, the more information, the better informed we all are is nothing but helpful.
So the other thing I should mention, I did before, what was, there will be a follow-on permit required. It's a development plan that will come to your commission. We also anticipate that additional nets will be applied for as well, and those will go through the normal development plan process that will be heard by your commission.
Okay. Let's move the agenda forward if we may.
I have one more.
In terms of process, so the emergency permit is completely your purview without any other kind of approvals?
Correct.
And the others all would come before us and are part of the regular permit process?
Right. And they would be appealable to the board.
And what determines emergency?
It has, it has to qualify as an emergency, and emergency is defined in the ordinance. So that's, so there are basically three findings that the director has to make in order to issue an emergency permit. One is that the action is a result of an emergency. The second is that, to the extent possible to ascertain that it's consistent with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, and that we've obtained public comment, if that's possible. Sometimes we have emergencies where people have to act. They act before they even get a formal emergency permit from us. So there are others that are a bit more deliberative.
Commissioner Sennour.
One last question. Has there been any progress on bringing before the Board of Supervisors the jurisdictional issue?
That was my last.
Oh, thank you.
My last issue. So I believe, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that when we talked about this issue probably at least a year ago, yeah, it was definitely a year ago because it was before everything that happened in December and January. One of the things that we, that Public Works and Planning and Development staff informed the commission about is that we hadn't made a determination as to what, who would naturally have jurisdiction over the roundabouts. That Highway 101 HOV lanes was clear, and so your commission said, well, we want to make sure that we have jurisdiction over the roundabouts. I've been talking with Public Works and SB CAG staff. They're close to submitting permit applications, and when I say close, within the next few months, we expect those applications to be submitted. And we have all determined that these are, the roundabouts should not be considered regional transportation projects, that they should be local transportation projects because of the way that they connect into the road system, the way that they're being designed and funded. And so they will be in the jurisdiction of the Montecito Planning Commission, and it does not require board action. Yes. So sometimes delay saves you a tiny bit of work. In this case, it did. So we'll let you know when those applications get submitted and let you know what we think the timeline will be for the review and...
Commissioner Keller, one last and final comment.
Thank you. No, thank you. I mean, you know, this is an item that is of great concern and import to the community. So thank you for expediting this decision.
Of course. Well, I'm not sure I would classify it as expedited, but it happened, and I promised you we would do it before the applications got submitted, so I think I've met my promise. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes my director's report.
All right, thank you. Let's move now quickly to the project's status update.
Chair Newman, members of the commission, at the last hearing, there was a request for a update on the Maramar project. So the brief update that I have is we did reach out to Maramar, and they indicated that they expect to have construction or physical construction completed in the first part of January 2019. They declined to give us any information on an actual opening date of the facility. They're going to transition from the physical construction, and they're starting to install the landscaping. And what they indicated to us is at some point, they're going to transition over to the actual people that will be running the hotel. And then those people are going to train staff and do all that. And then there will probably be a formal announcement by Maramar as far as whenever their grand opening is going to be. We're not privy to that information. We asked, but they declined to provide it to us. That's what I have as far as the project status updates.
One other quick administrative item for all the commissioners and public to take note of, our 2019 meeting schedule has now been released, so please do check your calendars and mark them accordingly. I think next year will be a full year for us, so take note of that, please. All right, moving on now with respect to item number 12, intent to waive a public hearing. There's two matters.
Chair Newman, members of the commission, just on that item, those are noticing purposes only. They're not for action, so we can move to the standard agenda on that one.
All right, now with respect to the standard agenda, as mentioned earlier, we're going to take things a bit out of order and appreciate the patience of those that are going to be leapfrogged a bit. So we'd like to have and hear from Mr. Fry, please, first, who's going to advise us with respect to a bit of an update relevant to the Thomas debris flow and perhaps address some of the other questions that have come up. So please, Mr. Fry.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for coming.
Good morning, and members of the commission. Thank you for inviting me here this morning. My initial understanding was to come and explain some questions that have come up about flood mapping in the Montecito area. And so I've put together a very brief PowerPoint to, I think some graphics will go a long way in explaining some of what's going on. And then I'll be more than happy to speak to some of the issues that were raised this morning with regards specifically to a debris basin on Randall Road and some other things that might be going on, too. So again, thanks for allowing me the time here. So FEMA flood mapping. The flood mapping is a FEMA work product. I just want to start off with that, to emphasize that. We work with what they produce. And in the Montecito area, up before the debris flow, the main FEMA flood insurance rate map was dated, they refer to it as an effective date, that's kind of a FEMA term. So when I say effective date, that's the date that FEMA puts a map into practice. So the working FEMA flood insurance rate map up until the debris flow was dated December of 2012. The debris flow came along, and because of the major changes to the topography, the flood elevations depicted on those maps really became unusable anymore. The flood insurance rate map is still used for insurance purposes, but not by the Flood Control District to plan for the reconstruction within the debris flow area. For that, we're using the recovery mapping, which you're familiar with. That's another FEMA work product. The Board of Supervisors adopted it on June 19. And that is what we're using today. That's an interim map to be used by us until FEMA can redo the flood insurance rate maps for the entirety of the Montecito community. That's a timeframe of four to five years. So the recovery mapping does have a shelf life, but it's going to be on the order of four to five years. So mixed within what all was going on in Montecito with the debris flow, but unrelated, completely unrelated, FEMA had been in the works for four or five years, or actually longer, to update the flood insurance rate maps along the coastal boundary. Those happened to become effective on September 28 of this year. And there was confusion as to what is this? Is this the new mapping in the entirety of the Montecito community? And I understand why there's that confusion out there, because when you look at the, at the current flood insurance rate maps, and you can do so fairly easily online if you've never done that, those maps, which cover broad areas, have many large panels. And so when FEMA changes, in this case, the coast, in fact, Mr. Wilson, if you could go to the next slide, please. If FEMA is going to change just a portion of a large panel, in this case, just the coast, when they adopt that change or it becomes effective, then when it's depicted in what you can see online, they show the whole panel as updated September 28. Well, those areas extend into the debris flow area, so it's kind of misleading, to tell you the truth. But this graphic here, the blue swath along the coast, represents what the September 28 changes addressed. It's very limited, and it does not cover the debris flow areas. So if we could go to the next one, please. So the process to update the flood insurance rate maps, this four- to five-year-long process... So the process to update the flood insurance rate maps, this four- to five-year-long process, is a very process-oriented procedure governed by the Code of Federal Regulations. FEMA has actually already begun the process. This is a timeline here of the various milestones that take place. It's a very open, transparent process. It is subject to appeal periods, et cetera. That whole timeline there represents a good four, five years. And at the Far Left the Discovery Meeting, that's kind of a kickoff meeting, if you will. Next slide, please. Which has already been scheduled. The kickoff meeting for the South Coast and the Montecito community is scheduled for December 12th, so it's less than a couple of weeks off. FEMA has already penciled out a draft schedule for some of the earlier milestones, and you can see that, you know, it easily extends into 2020, 2021, and there's process to follow even after that. This is just to show that the discovery meetings have been scheduled. In this case, FEMA is going to be looking at other areas of the county as well, including the San Ynez Valley, for example. So they've scheduled a discovery meeting up there as well. But there will be a discovery meeting for the Santa Barbara South Coast. It'll include the cities, December 12th. So that is what's going on with the maps, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Commissioner Sennou?
Just December 12th meeting will be, the discovery meeting will be held where?
That will be held at the EOC.
Okay.
And that's not a public meeting, I might add.
It is not.
No, it's not. It's really for community officials. Yeah.
Commissioner Keller?
May I ask, so the, for the map that was effective as of 12/4/12, when did that process begin?
The process that led to that map?
Yes. Did that take four or five years, or was that longer?
That map itself was actually, the technical parts of the map were actually developed years and years and years in advance of 2012. The updates that came along in 2012 were more of a FEMA effort to digitize nationwide all the maps. Previous, all the maps were paper maps. If you wanted to see a map, you had to come into our office, or you had to notify FEMA and ask them to mail you a map. So they undertook a fairly big effort nationwide to make all of those maps digital. Also, they did some elevation datum configuration changes, too. The technical limits of the special flood hazard areas or the flood elevations didn't really change with those 2012 maps. Those were all done long ago. But every time there's a formal FEMA-driven map change, it goes through that process. Now, there are individual property that come along that may have a project or whatever, and there's opportunities for them to change a map as well. Totally different process.
Now, I'm just trying to get a sense of what events were taken into consideration when that map was developed. Did that map take into account the heavy rain flows, rainfall, like recent fires? Do those have any effect on the flood, the flood insurance because of the potential for flooding as a result of loss of vegetation? Or, I mean, what kind of natural disasters were taken into account with that 12/12 map?
Flood insurance rate maps, as a rule, and everything is dictated at the federal level as to how they do this, do not take into consideration wildfire watershed burns. It's a true flooding event with a green hillside. So no, wildfires are not taken in consideration. The recovery mapping that we're now using does.
Okay, so just because I think there is such confusion, there is a FEMA, the flood insurance rate map as of December 12th of 2012, and the process to update that, that will be four to five years from now, and that is what determines flood insurance rates. And then there is the recovery map, the purpose of which is to do what, please?
Well, keep in mind that when this four- to five-year flood insurance rate map comes along and is adopted and becomes effective, then the recovery map goes away. The recovery map is an interim to allow us to guide our rebuilding between now and the time that that flood insurance rate map comes out.
And will it be relied upon by insurers for purposes of insuring?
The recovery mapping is not used by insurers. In the National Flood Insurance Program, which is a federal program, they use the 2012 flood insurance rate maps.
So for however, for people who are affected by wishing to procure flood insurance in the Montecito-Santa Barbara area, who will their insurers, what will their insurers be looking to for a standard?
I can only speak to the National Flood Insurance Program.
But the locals are not held to that.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Let me perhaps interject here. Commissioner Keller, let me interject with a bit of knowledge.
I think these are the kinds of questions that residents have.
Yes, let me just try to help to answer your question. There are two systems of flood insurance. One is in the private marketplace, and the other is the federal insured program. The FIRM map speaks to the federal insurance program itself, and that is, if you will, for many, the flood insurance source of last resort if private coverage is not available or available at reasonable rates. The FIRM, F-I-R-M, map and the ratings, such as AE and the like, developed by federal law, apply to the federal program. It is a matter, however, of state law and up to individual private insurers to make a determination as to what they will do in their underwriting process to assess risk and whether to issue policies. So I think that's as granular as we could possibly get here, and I hope with that clarification, your question is.
Thank you for clarifying, Commissioner Newman. I was just hoping that Mr. Frye would give us some official word, because clearly I know there are private insurance companies as well as national, and I'm wondering if residents have any recourse when private insurance companies change their rates based on a standard other than the national? And it appears that all they can do is fall back on the insurance that is provided or is possible through the national program.
Well, I think the private program, the fallback or the source of relief for a private property owner that may feel they need help would be through the State Insurance Commissioner. Again, and I'm speaking a little bit outside my area of expertise here. I know enough about insurance to be a little bit dangerous. I do know that the National Flood Insurance Program is a very rigid, based on the flood insurance rate maps, the premiums are set, and that is a very controlled program. I really know very little, I'm sorry, about the private industry.
Thank you.
And I just have a couple of quick questions. With respect to the FIRM data and the map that was released and effective in September of 18, when was that data compiled and how was it compiled? Was it, for instance, based on any of the LIDAR flights in January? Or what was the data collection process that resulted in the FIRM September 18 effective map?
Yeah, the technical data that was used to do that mapping was obtained well in advance of January. The technical mapping effort really took place at least 18 to 24, 36 months ago. So it was done over that four- to five period of time.
And going back, if we may, to your PowerPoint presentation with the slide that showed the various meetings to be held. Yes, thank you. Are any of those going to be public meetings? And if they are, who will, who has the responsibility for noticing them and how will notice issue?
Commissioner Newman, there will be public meetings. FEMA itself takes on a responsibility to publicly notify, however, Flood Control as a rule. And we've gone through, gosh, a handful of flood insurance rate map changes over the relative recent past. We always hold two public meetings. One meeting, and we will send out letters to, we notified each individual on the coastal map change, for example. We sent a letter to each property that was along the coast, Tyre County. We hold the first public meeting before the map is adopted. It's still in an, what's the term that we're using here, the appeal period. So that gives an interested party time to review the map that's out there, and if they feel there's a problem with the map, they can appeal it. So we have that meeting. And then we have a second meeting, actually after the map is adopted. At that time, it's more of a meeting to say, here we go, folks, the maps are about to change. It's too late to appeal, but heads up, the maps are going to change, because there are some actions that can be taken by a property owner. Say, for example, they're not in a special flood hazard area in the earlier map, and then they're going to be put into a special flood hazard area. If they purchase that flood insurance, there's a little bit of advantage if they do so before the new map becomes effective.
Okay, thank you. And then additionally, could you perhaps update us in the community on the percentage of vegetation regrowth? Last, I believe, we heard it was around 30%, and I'm wondering if with the recent moderate rainfall and the weather conditions, the regrowth has increased beyond 30%?
Well, I don't have anything that's up to date from last week's rain. Last week's rain was a very beneficial rain, perfect, and we need more of those. Maybe we'll get another one tonight. We look to the Forest Service for reports on that. They're up there all the time, and we've been meeting regularly with them. And the latest we got is probably the latest that you heard, is that the first year of growth was slower than normal, which isn't a huge surprise, because we did have a very dry year last year. As compared to the Whittier Fire, for example, for some reason, that north-facing slope pointed towards the lake experienced really, really good regrowth, but the Thomas Fire, not so much. So it's not on track that you'd like to see, and that's why when you have a wildfire, you know, all the experts say it's going to take five years plus or minus. It might be a little sooner, maybe a little bit longer. It's just based on all these factors that are outside of everyone's control.
And then perhaps tagging on to some of the discussion while we were hearing from the Director, what is your best guesstimate at this juncture with respect to the timing for the ring nets and their possible installation? Assuming, of course, the stars align on the multitude of approvals that have to be obtained, what's the best guesstimate about installation?
Installation of the ring nets? The ring nets are, as you probably know, a project that's being pursued by the partnership. And Flood Control, really, our focus is on our infrastructure, which I'll speak to in just a little bit. I can't really speak to the installation schedule of the ring nets.
Counsel, you want to comment?
Chair Newman, I would just like to clarify that the Director of Planning and Development is the decision-maker on that project, not Flood Control. And so while they might have a role in consultation, they would not be the decision-maker on that project. The decision-maker.
Commissioner Keller?
Just quickly, the coastal update, you said it had a very limited area. It was hard to tell from the map. How limited? How far inland does that actually go?
Commissioner Keller, I would just broadly say a couple hundred feet from the beach, from the cliffs, whatever, inland.
So maybe not even as far as Highway 101?
Well, no, not really. The only locations where it might sort of finger upwards is where you have the Carpinteria Slough, for example, the Galida Slough, or where a creek will come into the, you know, daylight into the ocean. So there's a riverine study that has base flood elevations, and then you've got the coastal. So FEMA took a close look at where those transitions occurred, and it may have extended a little bit more than a couple hundred feet up, but generally, not much.
Thank you. And just because it's not clear to me, the recovery map that was issued in June of this year, that was done under whose jurisdiction? Was that done by FEMA? And was that done with data obtained when? And the purpose of that is for what?
Commissioner Keller, the recovery mapping was produced by FEMA. It was based on data that was acquired through a cooperative FEMA slash state CAL OES effort, and the purpose was...
I'm sorry, and when was that, please? When did they take those measurements?
The end of January.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the purpose of the recovery mapping was to provide the locals, namely us, a tool to guide reconstruction in these areas that were hit so hard, because the flood insurance rate maps that we would otherwise be using were really rendered unusable by the drastic changes that occurred on January 9th.
And thank you. And then what is, because these are two separate processes, what is the legal weight of this recovery map?
Well, the legal weight is...
The same as the current?
Again, I don't want to step outside my lane here, but the Board of Supervisors adopted that map, so it's a part of our Chapter 15A Flood Plane Management Ordinance. That's what we use now as our best available information.
So that December of 2012 is now obsolete? In terms of the area that we represent?
You're getting into the weeds here, and this is fine. I can talk all day about this stuff. But the 2012, as I said, were rendered unusable because of the drastic changes. However, as we process these recovery cases that come through, we rely on the recovery mapping, and we also rely and review the 2012 mapping as well, and we take the more conservative of the two. And as it happens to be, it's not common, but just a day or two ago, we had a case come through where the 2012 mapping was more conservative. So that was what we went with.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming, and again, my personal apologies for the delay in today's meeting, but we appreciate the information and always are glad to have you a representative of your department here. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. And would you like me to touch briefly on the Randall Road Basin?
Please.
Please, if you would.
Okay. It's great questions. Randall Road, the debris basin. I wasn't really putting thoughts in a logical order in my mind on this topic, so I'll be a little bit disjointed here. But Flood Control has a number of projects that are out there in response to the debris flow, projects that involve debris basins and a number of other things as well. We are pursuing these projects with the hopes that we can obtain grant funding for these projects, because without that, we don't have the reserves on hand to pursue these projects. So the Randall Road Basin, and we have another debris basin that we're proposing as well, by the way, which you may not even be aware of, because it's not really out there. We're in the beginning stages of, like, everything we're doing. We are in the process of grant applications with FEMA. That's in the very early stages. And you know what? If we come back and are not successful, there's a likelihood that these projects will go away simply because we don't have the funding. So everything that we're doing is a step-by-step-by-step basis, knowing that at any point of the way, we could hit an end to the project. But we're taking every step along the way. Randall Road Basin, we are, as we speak, about to bring in a consultant to do an EIR. So it's going to go through a very robust review process, a very transparent... So it's going to go through a very robust review process, a very transparent, I'm sure it'll come before you. Whatever the PND process is, that's what's going to go through, and it will be an EIR. So there'll be plenty of opportunity. As we develop this project, we're developing exhibits, et cetera, that we can share with people who are interested. We're doing that right now. We're working with a rendering artist and trying to come up. I don't know if you were around when we built the Montecito Creek Debris Basin at Casa Dorinda, but we kind of did the same thing. We tried to, we didn't try to. We developed renderings that we presented to, well, at that time, the Montecito Association. And so we will be inviting feedback on that. The second location of the proposed debris basin is on Buena Vista Creek at Park Lane. Kind of a different layout. That's almost a de facto debris basin right now. It's a very confined canyon that comes down. It hits Park Lane. There's a big culvert there that gets plugged up, kind of acts as a debris basin. So we want to pursue funding to construct a basin that would basically consist of building a ramp down into the creek so that it would facilitate a cleanout when it happens again. Not if it happens again, but when it happens again. We've got other grant applications for some of our existing basins to maybe squeeze out a little bit more volume, to modify some of the outlet works, specifically Cold Springs Basin, Santa Ceda Basin, Romero Basin. If any of you are familiar with our Gubenador Debris Basin, we have an outlet work there that is a modification to what was constructed by the Army Corps. And it's a fish passable, and it passes finer sediments as well. So we want to approach that style at those other three basins as well.
Commissioner Keller?
Only the, we skipped over the last slide you had in your presentation, which the newspaper article looked to be dated 1964. So that was the location of the area where the most recent debris flow did the same kind of damage and would be the location of the Randall Road Debris Basin, correct?
The point of those photographs, in fact, the graphic on the right of that slide was a Los Angeles Herald newspaper article in 1914. There is a long history of flooding in this community, so it's not if, but when it'll occur again.
No, I mean, I wanted to bring note to it because I was not aware myself that there is such a history, especially in that particular location. So I think this is an incredibly wise path to be following. And may I just ask one other quick question? Access to the Gubenador Debris Basin, where might we go to observe that specific rebuilding area?
Well, we'd be happy to take you up there. If you want to go up there, let us know, because it's behind locked gates. So unless you want to, you know, I can't encourage you to hop the gate. So it's up Gubenador Canyon Road, and then there's a private driveway that you have to know which private driveway it is, and it kind of snakes back through some other private properties, and then it's up towards there.
I only ask this because one of the things that I heard had been suggested is that the Montecito Board of Architectural Review be asked to get involved with the design of any potential debris basins, especially those that might be very visible, might be close to public view. And I would, I think that would be a very wise thing to do and very helpful to you. And so I just was curious as to how the Gubenador had been altered, both for function and also for appearance, is the question?
I would say that Gubenador, in my opinion, it's not accessible by the public. So except for the property owners, and there's only three or four surrounding properties, except for them, nobody is going to see that. So that's a little different example than what Randall Road might present. Randall Road is going to go through a very open, public process here. We're fully prepared. And, you know, we fully intend to vegetate, landscape, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that after that establishes itself, there's going to be a lot of landscape hiding going on of that basin.
Thank you.
Commissioner Senna?
A couple quick questions. First, thank you very much for your presentation and answering our questions, informing the community of all this archivally, that they can tune in versus just a meeting that does not have video, is of great import. A question on the two proposed, Randall and Buena Vista, do you have volumetric sort of projections about the total capacity of, because each debris basin is very different in its holding and it silts up, et cetera, as has happened over the years? So what are you sort of targeting as far as the metrics for volume holding? Thank you.
I think counsel wants to comment.
If I may jump in before Mr. Fry responds. Two items. One, I would just like to emphasize that the two new proposed debris basins that Mr. Fry mentioned are really at a very early planning stage. And I'd like to emphasize that any, the required environmental review, including any needed alternatives analysis, would be completed before commitment to either of those projects. And I would also like to note for the commission that we're agendized not to discuss any individual projects in detail, and I would recommend against going into any sort of specifics regarding any individual project at this time.
It was certainly a generalized question, I thought, but perhaps not, and I will take counsel's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for your appearance and your willingness to be here and for your responsiveness. It's all appreciated.
Thank you.
Chair Newman, I'd just make a quick request, you know, thank John Fry for showing up. And then can we take a two-minute break, three-minute break before, so we can set up for the next, whenever you're ready to move on to the next agenda item?
Sure. All right, we'll be in recess for five minutes, and then resume.[1023.98]
We have to give up a moment to... ...over listening, yeah?
She said that, do you like... Okay.
I'm going to go back on the record. For item number one, following this hearing on the request of Kent Cooper, appellant to consider case number 18 APL 14, appeal filed on June 14, 2018, of the appeal of the Director's decision to approve land use permit, case number 17 LUP 60.
Thank you. First proceeding, are there any ex parte or site visit disclosures in addition to those that are previously of record from our earlier meeting? Seeing none, all right. One item for the record, we need to consider whether to receive the various letters, particularly those in excess of one page into the record for today's hearing. Chair will entertain a motion from any of the commissioners as to their preference in this regard.
I'd make a motion to accept them. I've read them.
Turn on your mic.
Mr. Cooper, can you please turn on your mic? Thank you.
I'd make a motion to accept those documents. I've had enough time to read them. I hope the other commissioners have too.
All right. It's been moved to receive the letters. Just for the record, that would be the letter from the appellant, Tracy Wilfong, dated November 23rd. One originally dated October 8, 2010, but received on November 26th from Doug Grant, I believe it is, with an attachment. And then the third being an item received from counsel dated November 27th from Christopher Haskell. So a motion has been made. Is there a second to the motion? Okay. The attachment of the... Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify. So the Monastito Planning Commission's Procedures Manual, the deadline for submission of comment letters is the Friday prior to the hearing. I would recommend, for the purposes of your motion in terms of accepting wait submissions, just including that last one because the department was closed on the holiday for Friday. So typically when we do that, we would extend as a courtesy that deadline to the next business day.
All right. So is there a second to the motion?
I would second. I just wanted to clarify that we're including all the documents we currently have in our possession, including the attachment to the letter that was received yesterday.
That's correct.
Thank you. I'm seconding the motion.
Okay. All right. It moved and seconded to receive all the letters and attachments received. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously received. All right, we'll proceed now to hear from staff, and I'll ask my colleagues to hold their questions until the staff presentation is concluded. Ms. Harris?
Good morning, Chair Newman, members of the commission. My name's Tess Harris, and I'm the case planner for this project. The item before you today is the continuance of an appeal, which you heard on October 17th. At the October 17th hearing, your commission requested that the item be continued so the applicant and appellant could try to work out an agreement regarding a potential lot line adjustment on their properties. As a reminder, the appeal was filed by the neighbor, Mr. Cooper, of the Wilfong retaining wall land use permit. And that land use permit allows for the construction of a retaining wall to the south side of the single-family dwelling, as well as permitting accessory development that existed on the property to obey a building violation. The portion of the retaining... There is another retaining wall, other than the south retaining wall, on the east and north of the existing single-family dwelling. And the portion of that retaining wall that's on the neighboring property is the area of concern that the appellant has. The land use permit would permit structural development on the applicant's lot. However, it would not permit structures or a portion of structures that are not on the applicant's lot. So it would only cover the Wilfong property. Staff received confirmation from the applicant by email on November 1st that she and her neighbor were in communications regarding a lot line adjustment. And then the applicant subsequently had provided an email on November 23rd, as well as a letter on that date that you've received in your packet stating that she believes the wall encroachment issue can be worked out, and stating that they're working on a lot line adjustment. And then yesterday afternoon, staff received the public comment letter from the appellant indicating that due to costs of the lot line adjustment, an agreement has not been made, and that the appellant requests that the fees be waived for a lot line adjustment. Then the applicant and the appellant are at the hearing should you have questions about their discussions regarding a lot line adjustment. So with that, I do have the PowerPoint from the last hearing if there are questions or clarifications that you'd like on the project. And with that, staff maintains our recommended actions from the October 17th hearing. Staff recommends that the Monastito Planning Commission deny the appeal, case number 18 APL 14, make the required findings for approval of the project, case number 17 LUP 60, including SEQA findings, determine that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to sections 15 301 and 15 303 of the state SEQA guidelines, and grant the de novo approval of case number 17 LUP 60, subject to the conditions as modified, and attachment be of the staff report. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions of staff from commissioners? Commissioner Keller?
Yes, please. Ms. Harris, what would approximately be the fees from the county to the county for making a lot line adjustment? How much... Exactly how much are they asking you to waive?
Commissioner Keller through the chair. The application fee for a lot line adjustment is a $5,000 deposit, and then staff bills our time on an hourly basis. So it depends on how much time... You know, how complete an application might be when it's submitted, and then we bill off of that $5,000 deposit. If our time exceeds the $5,000, then we would continue to bill on a monthly basis.
If a... If adequate records and maps are submitted to you, does that quicken your processing time?
Commissioner Keller through the chair, yes. Typically, when we receive an application that's complete, it is a faster process.
Thank you.
But we would still need to take the project to your... to the commission, so there'd be time for a hearing for the lot line adjustment and preparing a staff report and those other items that would not change, you know, in terms of timing for preparation.
Mr. Wilson, I see that you're anxious to speak.
Chair Newman, members of the commission, just for clarification purposes, the planning department, the fees are set by the board supervisors on our fee schedule, and it's adopted by the board. So we don't have the ability to waive those fees, and the Monastito Planning Commission in turn doesn't have those abilities to waive those fees because they're set by the board. So any request to waive fees for permitting would need to be taken up to the board supervisors and be initiated by the board supervisors. We don't have the ability to waive those fees.
Commissioner Senour?
Thank you. If I could get clarification and confirm exactly what's before us today, it is not about a lot line adjustment. There has been no application. Is that correct, first?
Commissioner Senour through the chair. That's correct. So what's before you today is the appeal of 17 LUP 60, the land use permit.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more questions from my colleagues, we'll then proceed to hear from the appellant at this time.
Chair Newman, commissioners, a very quick status report, and I think I'm sorry...
Is this better?
Yeah.
All right. I was going to give you a very brief status report, and then Mr. Cooper wanted to address the planning commission. He did not have a chance to...
All right. Before you do... For the record, if you would, please identify yourself and also how much time would you request for your presentation?
A minute.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So the status report is basically included in my letter that was delivered yesterday, which you have in front of you. I believe the parties have reached a conceptual agreement on a lot line adjustment. We sent you a diagram that would roughly show where that like-for-like exchange of property would be. There is an issue with the fees. Ms. Wilfong has agreed to submit $2,500. Of course, the process for a lot line would include paying for a surveyor and getting all the maps ready. So Mr. Cooper, my client, has already incurred a significant amount of fees for a situation which he was really not responsible in creating in the first place, and that is why we're asking for the waiver of fees. And, you know, we can... We'd be open to going to the board supervisors to get that waiver, but he is unwilling to move forward with a lot line if he has to, again, shoulder the most of the costs, which could well exceed $5,000, my understanding. So that is an issue. And I think with that, Mr. Cooper would like to address the commission.
All right. Please, Mr. Cooper.
Appreciate the invitation to speak with you this morning. I guess it still is morning. I'd like to start by saying that after two years of struggling with the building and safety and planning, this process, and certainly your thoughtful consideration last time we met, has given me sort of renewed faith that this system can work. And so, you know, I'm pleased with what we've been able to do so far. You know, I was... I trust you guys, you have received this new correspondence, and, you know, I guess we've heard now kind of what the circumstances are around your ability to waive fees. I was curious to hear about that. Perhaps there's more that you will say or can say about that later. But first, I would like to make a point of clarification with respect to the walls themselves, perhaps to provide some, you know, context, some perspective, and eliminate some... perhaps some confusion about exactly what we're looking at here. So with respect to the retaining walls, it's important to note that they're two sort of distinctly separate walls. They both encroach over the property line. These are walls running north, south, on the east side of the property. But they were built, as I say, at two distinctly separate times. The first wall, I'll call it the old wall. It goes back to the beginning, way back... I'm not exactly sure how far, but before I was up on the property. As the record indicates, it's a brick sort of faced, I believe it's a speed... What's it called? Speed block wall. It's mostly above grade, and it's combined of a section of wall, again, above grade, and then there are two brick posts and a brick stairway and gate, you know, providing sort of access from the side of the property. And I was friends with the old property owner, spent time at the house that was lost in the T fire, and always thought about this access, this facade that you could see from my house, as kind of an invitation to the property and sort of a secret, a private access that we both shared. And I was, you know, I have fond memories of that time and have, you know, sort of that relationship that we had between the two properties. Now, the other section of wall, which I'll refer to as the new section... Excuse me, just want to make sure I cover everything. This new section, which I believe is the focus really of this appeal hearing, as Tess Harris mentioned earlier, is... Does not date back to the beginning. And it was built, you know, started to be built sometime after 2004, when Ms. Wilfong purchased the property. And it is a much taller, it's a longer wall, again, running north, south, but it's to the north of the building, above this old section. We could refer to a plan, although perhaps not, you know, necessary, but this is a taller, it's a longer sandstone stacked boulder, non-reinforced retaining wall. And I believe it's really the source of all the aggravation and the discontent over the years, not to mention the liability and legal issues that we've already discussed here. This upper section is far more substantial than the lower section. It more than doubles the size of the original encroachment. And there are a number of extenuating circumstances for why this wasn't addressed earlier and why I'm addressing it now. I've created a timeline that goes back to when I was first up there, back to 2004. It doesn't really change where we are now, or the county's responsibility for what happened, but I have it here if you're interested in looking at it. I don't think... It's not part of the record, and I can... I have it here. I'd be happy to provide it, sort of as a context, if you're interested in going back and seeing the, you know...
I do need to ask you, because I want to follow you. It was my understanding from previously that there was a wall across the back of the house, the corner of which extended onto your property, and then a wall on the east side of the house that was on your property. Are you referring to one is the old and one is the new?
No.
And then the third wall is on the south side of the property?
Correct.
Which is completely on the applicant's property?
You're... And there is confusion around this issue, and I think we... If there's a site plan, I think there is...
Well, it's hard to tell. I think Ms. Harris has some photos.
There's a current site plan, I think. It's for the T fire rebuild. That would probably be the best one to look at, because it shows it all.
It's on our... It's on our... It's been given to us.
Yeah, so is it up? Is it... Is this it?
The photographs.
Yeah, I think the site plan actually works. This will work. There's a bigger map of it. We can really see it more distinctly. But I can refer to this one. Do I have a pointer?
Yeah.
Is that this?
Yeah. Red button.
Red button.
I thought I had him straight, and now he's confusing me.
Oh, red button.
Here.
Oh, okay. I just squeeze it, and it goes. Okay. All right. So to your question, Commissioner Keller, the wall to the north, you see it here?
Yes.
That's not on my... There's just a... There's a tip of it, as you see, that crosses over the property line.
Correct.
I'm not referencing that in any of my remarks. It's part of, I guess, the violations, but not really of my concern. It's not on my property. The new... The old section is this section is probably the bottom half of the wall, maybe the bottom third of this wall, that I refer to as the old section that's been there from the beginning. It's this brick section. It's a brick facing over, I think it's a speed block that comprises the pillars and the steps and the gateway.
I'm sorry. My confusion was because you talked about two sections of the same wall.
Correct.
That was why I was confused.
Okay.
Because there's only one wall. There's a north section of it and a south section of it, and the north section is newer.
Right. Yeah. So it is one wall, but it was built in two separate phases over a long period of time. The old section has been there from the beginning, and the new section to the north is new since Ms. Wilfong purchased the property. And as I say, built over... Built over several years. And as I say, there are lots of extenuating circumstances for why we're doing this now and why it wasn't done later. The timeline explains some of that. But I wasn't able to be here and to be aware of the day-to-day activities up, you know, up on that hillside, and was... Only became aware of them after the fact, and then put this timeline together to kind of assess out what happened. So as I say, I can share that time with... It may be helpful to have it, even just for the record, if you...
I appreciate the offer, but I think the record's closed at this time.
Oh, okay. All right, fine. And just a few more remarks. This wasn't going to take more than five minutes or so. So regarding my personal preference regarding this as the property owner, you know, where the encroachment on a property where the encroachment is, why I'm certainly willing and have been with Ms. Wilfong pursuing or exploring this idea of a, you know, an attempt to do a negotiated settlement or a solution around the lungs of a lot line adjustment, you know, I'm open to that. But my preference would be, and I think, you know, as demonstrated, you know, all things considered here, would be to relocate that sandstone section back to the property line. And my sense, especially after what I'm hearing about these county fees, it may end up being a more cost-effective solution in that, given the fact that the county has already made clear that, you know, during these proceedings, that should these existing sandstone walls become part of Ms. Wilfong's property, you know, the county will still enforce and Ms. Wilfong will be, I understand, obligated to bring those into conformance. So in addition to the fees for a lot line adjustment, there's still work that will have to be done, you know, even if we arrive at some solution there. And then just a note, there's been some concern expressed about safety, and this is with respect to the third wall, if you will, which is the one that runs east-west, and it's just below the property or the structure. I guess it's structural to that, to the building, you know, for which this permit, I guess, is issued. It's the permit wall. Concern about that, about moving this process forward, expediting the permit process, you know, in interest of safety. And I would just like to point out that, some of my understanding, that this wall is already complete. It was constructed a couple of months ago during this appeal process. So I'm not sure there are really safety concerns as county and Ms. Wilfong has expressed. And I think it's prudent for us to take our time and, you know, work through this... Work through this process, you know, to arrive at some kind of equitable solution. So, you know, I hope that provides some clarity in terms of, you know, what we're really looking at, in terms of the walls. You know, I once again appreciate your thoughtful consideration and would attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I see Commissioner Senour.
Just a quick question. In the last reference to a wall, you're talking about the south wall. Is that correct?
Yes, this last wall. Yes. And I think, as I say, it's running, it's not on my property. It runs east-west, and that's what I believe. This... I mean, that's how we've arrived here. That's the, sort of, the origin of the permit, is to rectify that situation, and then all of the violations are on top of that, of which the encroaching wall is only one.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate your comments, and now we'll hear from the applicant. Ms. Wilfong?
I want...
Excuse me.
Sure.
Commissioner Cooper?
I mean, but can you really just summarize? What is it that you're concerned about specifically? You know, what keeps you up at night? And what would make you satisfied?
You know, the timeline would go a lot to... And I don't want to go through it here. I mean, my preference was not to bring up a lot of this history in this forum, but I believe it is relevant to the outcome, you know, of this process. I prefer to submit something for you guys to look at, but there's some information there that goes back to 2004. In addition, I think Mr. Haskell has already explained, there's a series of liability disclosure issues, you know, discount issues with the property in the event I sell it for both Ms. Wilfong and I. And I just think it's really... It's prudent to resolve it. You know, I understand now it's been... You know, I've just learned from this new information submitted recently that it was an issue before, before my time. I was not aware of it when I purchased the property. But, you know, those are the reasons. I think there are several, you know, decent reasons, good reasons to rectify this.
Right. So it's an issue of liability. Right, so it's an issue of liability, it's an issue of discounting your property.
Those are two, you know, liability, discount, there's disclosure issues, there are property tax issues, you know, Chris can speak better, but there's a, there's a range, which is why we have these, you know, evidently why we have these county building codes and, you know, and down the line, you know, to, you know, personal property rights, et cetera. I think there's good reason to, for us to work out a solution.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Wolfong, we'll be glad to hear from you now, please.
I'd first like to say that I'm sick, I have a cold and I'm on medication, and I thought we'd be done by 10:00, and I'm a little bit shaky.
Okay, could you please?
And I got thrown off a little by what Mr. Cooper presented, I don't know whether to respond to what he said first, or to read what I had prepared for you.
First, if you would, could you bend the microphone a little bit closer?
Oh, yeah.
So we can hear you better.
How's that?
And that's much better, thank you. And second of all, as to the order of presentation, you know, this is your time to shine, however you'd like to proceed is, is up to you. The only question I have before you do start is, how much time you'd like?
I'll try to be as quick as possible, I'll try to stay focused. A word that comes to mind is what I walked in on when I was late this morning, jurisdiction. I think we're going way out of bounds here. I am here, Tracy Wolfong, trying to get a land use permit for a wall underneath my house. It is being appealed by the neighbor appellate, Mr. Cooper, because of a very complicated issue. I have, I will read my letter. I, I would like to add, first, I would like to add comment to my public comment letter that you received on Friday, November 23rd. At October hearing, the county urged MPC to allow LU permit because, they said, it is not in MPC's jurisdiction to delve into civil matters. That is very true. Though I appreciate MPC's attempt to help, I feel that MPC went out of bounds in delaying my permit because of neighbor appellate's 20-year-old grudge about legal easement wall, which in my letter I will call Grant Wall, Mr. Grant built it for the most part, but Kent is this morning saying he is more concerned about the more northern sandstone wall. The Grant Wall was lost and I replaced it when I moved there with my two four-year-olds and nine-year-old son. At last hearing in October, the MPC told county, quote-unquote, "This is your fault for the T-Fire rebuild approval of the Grant Wall, which appears in surveys to go over property line. The Grant Wall was approved because it is a legal easement and has been since 1980. It was legal when neighbor appellate bought his home in 2002. It was considered part of my property and legal easement when I bought house in 2004. And Grant Wall was approved in T-Fire rebuild because it was and is a legal easement. I have been extremely generous in tolerating this game and to consider working with appellate neighbor on compromise for his chronic aggravation over legal easement Grant Wall, which I will let you know, we're talking about 50 square feet. Two years ago, appellate neighbor Cooper, who has been hell-bent on ruining the value of my property since I moved here in 2004, called county while I was doing legal work on my property. He pointed out every small detail of possible violations on my property, and unfortunately I discovered I would need a permit for a wall under my house that needed more support than I knew. For almost two years, my house sat without needed support while I have worked through this county permit process. I have corrected all the petty violations appellate has pointed to. These corrections have devalued my property, added ugly views for my neighbors above me, and caused immense emotional and financial hardship. My antique two-ton driveway gates that had been there since 2009, nine years, had one post, one foot into appellate's property line, which is actually an easement. I moved the gates back, the gates are now in a less-than-optimal location. I, a like-for-like T-Fire rebuild shed that I have paid taxes on, insurance on, and is on all surveys of property, I had to remove the roof that encroached within 10 feet of setback, and lower by six inches the privacy wall between me and other neighbor. This shed protected six bikes and 12 surfboards that are now covered in tarps and not so lovely for my neighbors to look down on. The lowering of privacy wall, six inches, now leaves my other neighbor and I with less privacy. Temporary storage containers for my recently deceased parents' things had to be moved by crane 10 feet. They had been a privacy barrier because appellate neighbor built studio in our face and put no privacy hedge or wall. A simple 12-by-12 carport is now 10-by-12. I have done everything needed for a land use permit for an important supporting wall, and I am willing to work with appellate neighbor on a fair lot line adjustment. And he has done numerous things to devalue my property and my life. I ask that a land use permit be given for my house supporting wall today, please. Thank you, sincerely. I also have a letter that was emailed by a neighbor, and I'm not going to read all of it, but it says, "Attention, MPC, I have been following Tracy Wolfong versus Kent Cooper case with reference to the retaining wall. Sick, disgusting, pathetic, pathetic egomaniacs. Should they go on other things? In spite of county's and chairman's recommendations, some members can't help to block permits."
Just a moment, please. The letter that you're referring to is unfortunately not in the record before us and was not submitted to us, so we do want to hear.
Because they emailed it today.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, that, that, that was too late.
Okay.
And we've already closed the record.
I'll, I'll send it to you.
So, thank you for that. Is there anything else?
They do hope that you're not influenced by other things. And now I need to respond to Kent Cooper's, speaking of the two sections of wall, and he's more concerned with the newer section. And it's helpful to see if we maybe go to a photograph and, but, you know, this is part of what, I don't know why we're discussing this, but I will make it clear to you, and so then we can, the neighbor and I can all work together.
Ms. Harris will pull up the slide, which one would you like?
Okay.
The one of the brick wall?
Well, there's one from up on the hillside that looks down on the wall. It's from above.
I, I think it was, there must be another one.
Yep. It's a separate PowerPoint, it's, it's my PowerPoint where we have photographs of the wall. This is a county's PowerPoint.
Oh. And I didn't tell it, I think she was still there? Okay, this is kind of possible. Can we enlarge that?
Excuse me, so that we could hear you. Could you go back to the podium, please, so we can hear you and?
My eyesight's not very good.
Thank you.
And is there a laser on this? Where is that? Oh, am I doing that, when I do that? Okay. We are north, looking south, this is the wall that we are talking about. The south part of the wall is the older section built by Doug Grant, the Grant Wall, 1970. This section here, when I moved to the house in 2004, within a year, there was a huge storm, this was just hillside. There was a huge rainstorm, this all flooded, came down, there wasn't actually, and I, I, to go back a little bit, originally, the property lines for this area were eucalyptus trees that Bobby Hyde planted, and they are still there in most cases, and in most cases, they run very close, within inches to the actual property lines, that with 21st century machines we've discovered, you know, discrepancy, and here is one, because what happened is, you know, the eucalyptus tree is here, and with a recent survey, we find the property line is here. And it kind of is a triangle, it doesn't go straight down, the actual property line runs right on the brick wall, for the most part. And then, so we have this little triangle here, that's encroaching. If we were to build, take this down, well, Kent Cooper says it's higher and, and things like this. Well, it had to be to hold back this hillside, and I already, because the county told me to, that it would be part of the process, I needed to bring it down to under five feet. So I've already removed rocks that were there, and what's happening? The dirt, it's, there's an erosion happening. If I was to build the wall on this property line, as it should be, as Kent was suggesting, this is not safe, I don't even think this is in, within code, you can't do this, you can't get around this. For safety sakes, in this fire area, you have to be able to get around your house safely, and this is not safe if that wall was to be put in that position. We, I, and again, we were talking about like-for-like issues, which is, this is a great thing, with, you know, people, it's emotionally distressing to lose your home, and a likely, like-for-like is a fair thing, we bought our properties that way, we should be able to put it back. Sometimes there are huge differences, like I said, we're talking about 50 square feet here, other times it's more. This is inconsequential hillside that we're talking about, and this is, Mr. Cooper is not using this, this is hillside. You'll see on the lot line adjustment he proposed, which I have not yet responded to, because I wanted to ask him to come back with a more fair proposal, is, he, we're talking 50 square feet here, he wants 500 square feet. I don't want 500 square feet. And, and he wants that 500 square feet down in my most valuable and only flat land, of which there is probably 1,000 square feet. So he wants half of my most valuable flat land that's right next to his property.
Could you get, wrap it up, please?
Okay, so I'm just telling you the situation, and responding to Mr. Cooper's comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do have one question, please.
Could you go back to the podium, please?
You referred to there being an easement on the property, and I've seen nothing before us that's, that mentions the easement.
Everyone has told me it is a legal easement, legal prescriptive easement, when I bought the house, when it was rebuilt, Jeff Shelton, and when he worked with county, that was considered prescriptive easement, and.
What is mentioned, what, what do you understand that term means?
The means, well, I, I believe there's a, I, I don't know the exact term, statute of limitation, it's usually around seven years, if you don't like something, you take care of it. I've had similar problems with my neighbor on the other side, building on my property, I said I don't like it, he has to do it down, fine, within seven years. Once something's remained for seven years, it's considered legal easement and/or, you know, you can get, you can do what Mr. Cooper is doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Senour?
A couple, thank you, a couple of questions, first to council, perhaps about prescriptive easements.
Commissioner Senour, through the chair, I'm happy to address that. The, the answer is simple, the adjudication of prescriptive rights is not something that's within the, the jurisdiction of the Montecito Planning Commission, that's within the jurisdiction of the courts, and I would recommend that your commission not take action on the basis of an acknowledgement or validation of prescriptive rights, that's something that would take place outside of your commission.
Thank you.
Would you just give us your definition of it? I apologize.
A question for staff. I'm trying to basically consolidate this process and what's before us, with our, with your original staff report, if you could refer to that, in the issue summary, 4.0, page 2, okay, and you're summarizing, and basically, you take us through the process of, a violation was, was noted, staff went out, reviewed the property, came back, and basically issued an approval, is that correct, for, for a land use permit?
Commissioner Senour, through the chair, yes, so we, we had issued a land use, or approved a land use permit?
Approved.
And then during the appeal process is when it was appealed.
Correct. And, and, and your approval of conditions eight and nine, could you, could you kind of go over that, please, in, in, in your approval process? They were added, one was basically deleted, is that correct? Could you clarify all that for us, please?
Sure, Commissioner Senour, through the chair, so the original land use permit had a condition eight, which was abatement of violations, and a portion of that condition still remains in the land use permit, and then condition nine, which was wall extending beyond property, and that condition has since been removed. The idea behind including these conditions at the time was to try to rectify the issue that, at the time, before the item was appealed, the neighbor had brought up these walls. So, the abatement of violation had had a number of other items on the property, and then had mentioned portions of the walls that crossed the property line to be brought into compliance with the Montecito Land Use and Development Code. And the second condition, wall extending beyond the property, was, was similar, to bring the walls into compliance. However, after we received the appeal and through further review and consultation with other staff, we had realized that those conditions are allowing or, that that work would be done on another person's property, and in fact, we can only approve a land use permit on, for work that's done on, on the property in which the applicants applied for. So, while it was to try to kind of rectify a dispute, really, those conditions should not have been in there in the first place, because they would have allowed work on, on property that's not the applicant's, which is why we've, we've revised the land use permit, which is attachment B of the staff report?
Right.
So that it does not include those references.
Thank you for the summary, thank you.
All right, before we go further, we should take public comment, having heard from the applicant, so I do have a slip, and the only one I have is from you, Ms. Wolfong, but you're considered not a member of the public in this matter, and we've already.
What about my, the?
I'm sorry, would you?
Email to me? The letter that was emailed to me, could that be public comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I could not.
No?
Okay, all right.
So Chair Newman, hold on a second, Chair Newman, just for clarification purposes, the same rules would apply if she wanted to submit that email, if it was over a page, it'd be considered a lay comment, the commission could choose, if they wanted to, to approve it into the record by force of his vote, so that's for your commission to consider if that's the desired direction.
Okay, thanks for the guidance, none of us have a copy and haven't seen it, so it's hard to consider it in that context.
Would you want me to give you a copy?
All right. Ms. Worfong, we'll give you that additional latitude, and we'll ask some copies be made.
So Chair Newman, thanks. We might want to take—members of the commission, if that's something you want to consider, we might want to take a couple-minute break, just so that information can be submitted. And then the commission would have to—to take action whether or not they want to vote it into the record.
Understood. Let's let this process go forward. We're going to take a moment just to copy this. We'll distribute that, take a look at it, and then we'll get back with you on your request.
So this is all part of the project? Okay. Thank you.
We're—we've received—Ms. Worfong, the letter that you advised was emailed to you by a neighbor. And as you note, you say the neighbor wishes to stay anonymous. I'll just note for the record that the letter is undated and is unsigned. And I would personally—well, I'll see if anybody—any one of my colleagues want to introduce a motion to place this into the record. Okay. All right. No motion having been made. We thank you for submitting this, but it is not received into the record. So at this time, we will close public comment. And the appellant, you may have a rebuttal if you so wish, or if you've said what you care to. We're fine to have your comments submitted.
All right. Counsel. How—
Chris Haskell for Kent Cooper. Another one minute, if I would—if I could.
Please.
There are no legal easements. The commission has already discussed that. That's not before this commission. There are—there's no recorded easement. There's no order from any court establishing any easement. There is no right to maintain those walls. The walls, again, that we're talking about, the boulder wall or the sandstone wall, as Mr. Cooper referred to, it is completely unreinforced. It's—it's right there at the foot of the hillside. It is an encroachment. And—and it's not permitted work, obviously. We would ask that the land use permit and obviously the building permit would be conditioned on getting a lot line adjustment, that the parties can work together. I think there is still—if I'm hearing what Ms. Worfong has said, there is some indication that we can still work forward and work—come up with some lot line adjustment that would be fair. Mr. Cooper would get some property back for the property that he's obviously given Ms. Worfong, that she really wants. Mr. Cooper hasn't done anything wrong with this—with this encroachment. He was not a party to this encroachment being developed. It was obviously missed the first time around when the property was built in 1971. And then it was missed a second time by the county when the rebuild after the T-fire was approved. Those were two opportunities where the issue could have been resolved, and it wasn't. And now Mr. Cooper is left in a situation where his property has been encroached upon. There are liability issues, especially with an unreinforced boulder wall, which is on his property. There's disclosure obligations. I don't see why he needs to be saddled with all of that when he had nothing to do with bringing about that situation on his property. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Ms. Worfong, if you have anything additional to say, we'd be pleased to hear Please, if you will, go to the podium. Thank you.
I think that I should be given a land use permit, and the issue with Mr. Cooper be settled outside of this room.
All right. Thank you. All right. We will now close the public hearing and go to any commission questions and commence our deliberations. Commissioner Keller.
Ms. Harris, at the time you initially issued the land use permit, which contains conditions eight and nine, that was before you realized you couldn't include those in the permit. That was because there were problems with the built—with the walls themselves that you felt needed rectifying? What was the purpose of including those conditions initially?
Commissioner Keller, through the chair. So we had received public comments from the neighbor regarding those—those items. And initially, when I had gone out to the site, I didn't notice that they were of a of a height that would warrant a planning permit. And then we had building staff go out to the site again to measure them more accurately and determine that they were over the four-foot retaining wall exemption for a planning permit. Again, it was a dispute between neighbors that had, you know, come up to our attention. And there are a number of—of documents that we have from planning and building permits that show the wall on the property. So it's—it's unclear whether—well, the—the—the wall itself is not on the applicant's property, or the portion of the wall that's on the neighbor's property is on the neighbor's property. So, you know, if—if—well, there's not really an easy way to rectify that solution, I would say.
No. I appreciate why you're trying to define this very, very narrowly, to only involve the new retaining wall. And that's the one you're referring to, that will be over four feet high, that does need a land use permit. But initially, when you included the other portions of the walls that are existing, the purpose of including those walls was to repair either—or rehabilitate—or I'm just saying, why was—why were those original existing walls included in the first effort that you made?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, one of the findings, as we discussed in our—when we reviewed this project back in October, that has to be made for a land use permit is that the property is compliant—is compliant with all laws, rules, and regulations, and there's no outstanding zoning violation. So we had conditioned the permit at the time to resolve outstanding violations.
So those zoning violations were—please.
Well, there were—there was several. There was the shifting of a couple of storage containers outside of the setback. There was some modifications to the gate that Ms. Worfong mentioned, as well as to two carports. And then there was this issue of the retaining wall. And so recognizing that it crossed the property line, we had identified that, you know, the portions crossing the property line would need to be brought into compliance in order to—to be able to make that finding, which could have either occurred through lowering their height to be below the exempt allowance of four feet or removal. We sort of left that up to the applicant. The appellant, in his appeal, rightly pointed out the fact that he had not granted any authorization to do any work on his property. And looking at the issue further, recognized that we don't really have the ability to compel work to occur on another property. And really, our focus should be solely on the—the existing parcel and the—the development that's within the parcel boundaries. And so that's why, bringing this appeal forward, we recommend modifications to those conditions to focus solely on the development on the parcel, to be able to make that finding, that the parcel itself and all development on the parcel complies with all laws, rules, and regulations. So hopefully, that helps us understand the thought process.
No, thank you. I understand. May I ask one follow-up question of counsel, please?
You may.
Given that these walls on the west, on the east and north side are on the appellant's property, if there was damage or bodily injury as a result of any failure of these walls, who would be legally liable?
Counsel, I—I—I appreciate the concern of my colleague, but I don't think it would be appropriate for us or staff to comment on a legal matter of that nature. It's a matter of liability to be determined.
Well, except, Commissioner, that the appellate has raised issues of liability. And I would like to get a sense of what actual liability there might be.
The courthouse is across the street, Commissioner Keller, and I think that's out of order and beyond our jurisdiction.
I'm not sure that's your decision. Let's have counsel please speak to that.
So commissioners, so I am not in a place to provide a legal analysis of the liabilities associated with private property ownership for applicants to the planning department. And I would just leave it at that. I'm—I'm here to—to advise the—the county as an entity, and I'm happy to address those issues.
I only raise that because it was mentioned by the appellant, and it would clearly be an issue of concern if there was question about where the actual property line is and who's liable—who is responsible for maintenance of the structures on those property lines. Thank you.
Clarification again from staff, please. Bear with me. The—the revised conditions of approval was rejected by the appellant. Is that correct? And that's why we're here? Was not accepted?
Commissioner Sonhour, through the chair. So they had already filed an appeal before we had revised the land use permit. So their appeal was from the original—
That's what—okay.
—land use permit, conditions eight and nine.
So it's not in consideration of the conditions? That's new before us. Is that correct?
Correct. The revised land use permit was done—
Thank you.
—during the staff report.
Thank you.
All right. No more questions from the commissioners. Let me just state to the parties that, first of all, we do appreciate your indulgence in our suggestion at our last meeting that you meet and confer in an attempt to resolve this issue to your mutual satisfaction, or perhaps, as is the hallmark of a resolution, to your mutual dissatisfaction as well. It is my own sense, listening to both sides, that you've made some progress in that area and—and that there may well be a path to a resolution here. That said, your commission will take some action today, I assume, and it may well disappoint one or both of you in—in that outcome. But that outcome doesn't preclude you at all, and hopefully will encourage you to continue your discussions so that you can resolve this between yourselves on a consensual basis, and that there'll be no further need to proceed through the planning and development appeal process. I will just add, as a personal observation and consideration, to the extent that there are financial considerations in your resolution, each of you need to, of course, consider the cost-benefit of resolving this matter versus the cost-benefit of continuing it on the path procedurally that it's on. And I'll offer maybe one suggestion for you to consider just privately and in your own right, and that may be that a source of funds available to either or both of you might be a title insurance company if either of you have obtained title insurance with respect to your properties. But that said, I think it's time, as we've been implored, to take action. We appreciate the efforts that you did make. And I will say personally, and I think all of my colleagues agree, that we hope your dialogue of resolution will can—continue. And it's in that spirit that—that we ask you to do so. So the chair will now entertain a motion—
Discussion.
—with respect to this appeal.
Discussion and deliberation before motion.
We're in deliberation at this time.
I understood that we did deliberation before we made the motion.
There's no motion pending.
Fine. Then maybe deliberate some more?
If you wish.
Only that, at the time, we—this came before us last month, it was very clear to me that the narrow, very narrow issue of the land use permit only dealt with a small portion of an ongoing problem. And I think I was the one that raised the issue of a lot line adjustment because it seemed to me a logical place to go. And as Commissioner Newman has stated, we're pleased that they have pursued that. But the other point that I made that is still relevant today is, if this one land use permit is granted, it really decreases the incentive to consider—to continue with any attempt to reconcile the other problems. And we were hoping that more progress could be made in this month so that there was indeed a chance to solve all of these outstanding and complicated problems. The suggestion of title insurance is yet another new idea. And if that goes anywhere toward resolving the issue, I would be very supportive of that. But it sounds as though both of you feel your properties are devalued by having this unresolved situation. And—
That's certain they've devalued.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Please, we—it's not appropriate for you to comment.
The—the word "devalued" has been stated by both of you, and possibly, I'm misinterpreting what exactly you feel has been devalued. But any kind of uncertainty in—in a sale or status of a property is—makes it difficult. So I think that other remedies, such as was proposed by Commissioner Newman, should also be pursued. And I don't believe, however, that that's anything we can incorporate into a motion. So I just wanted to raise those issues prior to having a motion made.
Commissioner Kupia.
Yeah. I mean, I just have one question that goes back in history a little bit. I mean, at the time of the like-for-like approval of the project being rebuilt, did the county actually have jurisdiction to allow any kind of construction to be built on someone else's property other than the applicant?
So—so Chair—Chair Newman, Commissioner Kupiac, I can't speak to what ordinances were on the books at the time. I would just indicate that, at the time of the rebuild—and I wasn't here during that time—is that I think the focus was the rebuilding of the property. And I don't think the walls are the focus of that decision that was made. They were just shown—they were just shown as—
The building was already a non-conforming existing use because it was closer than— closer to the setbacks than would have been normally allowed.
Correct. And so there's provisions in the like-for-like that allows for non-conforming structures to be rebuilt.
Yeah. No, no, I agree.
And so I think that at that time, that was the evaluation that was done. And I don't believe the walls—although they were shown on the site plan, I don't think they were a part of that consideration on that like-for-like that was done. You would think it was solely focused on the—the rebuilding of the house.
But I just had one other comment to make, and especially to— I just had one other comment to make, and especially to Ms. Wolfong and Mr. Cooper, that, you know, regardless of what decision gets made here, you know, if your application is upheld, you know, there's a course of action that takes case. If it's not upheld, you know, the remedial work that can be done on the small wall will happen, and you probably have recourse through a civil action. But I think it would be important for you guys to both in your deliberations to think about what a civil action means. You know, the cost of, you know, I know everybody has hardship issues in terms of describing what exactly, you know, it might cost them to get a lot line adjustment. But adjudicating, you know, this entire matter in a broader scope could be far more costly than that last lot line adjustment. And I would just hazard to say that I would take that into consideration very seriously.
Commissioner Sennauer?
Yes, I echo the Commissioners' comments, and especially the effort on both parties to come to a resolution on this. Unfortunately, lot line adjustment is not before us. What's before us is what's before us. And we have to deal with that as a commission, and from there, you can pursue an application for a lot line adjustment, et cetera, et cetera, separate from this. But again, appreciate all your effort and diligence in trying to resolve this. It takes a lot of work, and it is appreciated. So thank you.
All right. What is the sense of the commission? Anybody care to make a motion? And maybe for starters, let's take a look at page two, and you have before us the staff recommendation in this matter. Commissioner Sennauer?
I will move to deny the appeal. And I can read it into the record as staff recommendation, if that is appropriate, one, two, three, and four. And I will do that after perhaps input from the rest of the commission. Thank you.
All right. Motion's been made to adopt the staff recommendation, items one, two, three, and four on page two. Is there a second to the motion?
I'm going to very reluctantly second that motion, only because, I mean, I understand the position that Mr. Cooper is in. But I think that the staff's recommendation, at least in the most minimum way, provides a certain modicum of safety immediately to the north wall that needs to be rectified in terms of making the building more stable. And that's really what the LUP is, the modified LUP is about.
May I just correct, Commissioner?
Just a moment. So, motion has been made and seconded. All right, discussion?
I'm sorry, but Mr. Kupiak, it is not the north wall we're talking about. We're talking about a wall on the south side of the property.
I'm sorry, on the south side.
Okay, good. As long as, I wanted to be sure you knew.
The stability of the building is one issue, and I understand why the LUP wants to move forward to stabilize that condition. I just, you know, as I said, you know, I think that the consequences of this, because I believe that Mr. Cooper has every right to ask for a remedy to be put in place, I was reluctant today, as I was at the last meeting, to say, you know, we're kind of all kicking this down the can in terms of a kind of mistake that happened a long time ago. I would strongly urge that you do go before the county board of supervisors to ask for the waiver of the fees regarding the lot line adjustment, because I think this is a continuation of a problem that got created a long time ago. But in terms of the matter before us today, I think that recommending...
Speak in the microphone, please. Turn it on.
Accepting the county's recommendation about how to proceed is probably the best immediate reaction, best immediate action for our board.
All right. Any further discussion?
Just one last question, if you don't mind. You said that this was under the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Wilson. Does that mean that they can appeal to the Board of Supervisors as Commissioner Kupiak is suggesting to ask for a waiver, or is that not something that's feasible?
So Chair Newman, Commissioner Keller, just a matter of clarification, this item before you today is under the jurisdiction of the Montecito Planning Commission, as it's an appeal of a director's determination. So that's what's your jurisdiction today. My earlier comments in regards to the fee, that is not under the purview of either the department or the Montecito Planning Commission. That's under the sole discretion of the Board of Supervisors' office to waive any fees. So to clarify my comments, the item before you today isn't, it's under your jurisdiction. They have, both parties have the ability to appeal any decision today, as any normal applicant or appellant do to go to the Board of Supervisors. But it doesn't automatically go to the Board of Supervisors. If they want to ask for a waiver, that has to be done through the Board of Supervisors' office, but not through this action today.
Thank you. No, of course, I understand that this is not before us, but I share Mr. Kupiak's reluctance to approve this unless I know there is a path to a better solution. So I did not hear you say earlier that this was appealable, that the fees, that a waiver of the fees could be brought before the Board of Supervisors. And as a matter of procedure, I'm asking if that is the case. It appears that you did confirm that that was a possibility.
So Commissioner Keller through the chair, that action has to be initiated through the Board of Supervisors. So whatever has to be done, that's outside of the scope of this hearing today.
All right. So there be no further discussions or deliberations, I'll call for a vote. The motion that has been made, which is to approve the staff recommendation, to, one, deny the appeal in case number 18APL 0000-00014, two, to make the required findings for approval of the project as detailed in attachment A, three, to determine that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15301 and 15303, and four, to grant de novo approval of case number 17LUP 000000060, subject to the conditions as modified in attachment B to the staff report. So that is the motion before us, and we'll have a roll call for the vote. Oh, Commissioner Sennauer, you have a comment?
No, just the vote.
Okay. All right. We'll proceed to vote.
Commissioner Keller?
Have a stay.
Commissioner Sennauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Kupiak?
Yes.
Chair Newman?
Yes.
Motion passes 301.
Okay. All right. Well, again, we thank you all for your comments and urge that you continue your discussions. So returning to our standard agenda item, we'll go and complete the item concerning the Thomas fire in January debris flow building report. Staff have supplemental comments on that topic to share with us today?
So Chair Newman, members of the commission, I don't have any additional information to provide. I do have updated statistics. If you want me to just go through those, I reprinted this summary sheet of safety inspections that were done, that you can have for your records or for reference. And just as a side note, we are looking, I know it's taken us a while, we are trying to find ways to look at our data and compress it and analyze it to provide a clearer picture of exemptions processed and how those relate to building permits. It's a monumental task, just because there's a lot of different building permit variations that are out there. But we are actually, as of yesterday, we are linking records together to try to create a clearer picture. So I don't have that report for you today. We anticipate, hopefully, in the meeting in December, we'll be able to have a report that shows some consolidation of this information. But the paper that I just handed out is just a summary sheet of all the safety inspections that were conducted on the Montecito debris flow and the Thomas fire. And then as far as the case managers' records go, there were, we have a record that shows there was 44 exemptions that were requested. Nineteen of those have been approved. There, as I mentioned last time, there's 323 records created for case managers. And the number of those that are still open, or 289 of those are still open, are still being reviewed by case managers. And we have closed 33 of those, 323. And then as far as case manager contact, we're up 1%. We're at 64% property owners that have contacted case managers in an affirmative way. So that's where we're at as far as the statistics go through the planning department. I don't have any further information.
Do you have a sense of the red placards, those that were either totally destroyed or over 50%? Is that a red placard? Is that correct? Red designation?
So the red placards could be a wide variation as far as it's unsafe to enter. It doesn't necessarily mean that it was 100% destroyed. There's a number of factors in there. I think if you look at that, it had 81 total red structures destroyed, which was 100% damage.
Is that 81 or 60, Matt?
All right. Oh, it might be 61. Sorry.
61. And...
I need new contacts.
Of those totally destroyed, do you have, is there, have there been any applications to rebuild?
Commissioner Sennauer through the chair, yes, there have been. I can think of one off the top of my head that is actually in process right now.
Do you know the area of that?
It's Olive Mill Road.
Okay.
Top of Olive Mill.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keller?
Just because it's hard for me to comprehend all of this. The reason that there are now many more green placards is because those structures were either repaired, yellow ones that were repaired, or red ones that were demolished. Is that correct?
Commissioner Keller through the chair. So, yeah, this sheet that I handed out is solely focused on Building and Safety Division's safety assessments. So as you see the progression moving, it's with a safety assessment. So to receive a green placard would be that either a repair was done, or the structure was completely demolished, so now it's safe, as in there's nothing there.
Correct.
So it could be red structures, or structures that had initially been red-tagged have either been repaired or demolished, and now they're received a green tag. Or it could be structures that were initially tagged with a yellow tag that have been repaired or demolished, and they're now at a green tag.
Right. It just seems, yes, to just track things, that things that initially were with yellow have been moving into the green. But it appears that things with red, and those are all moving, also moving into green primarily because they've been demolished then?
Either demolished, Commissioner Keller through the chair, either demolished or substantially repaired to receive a green tag.
So then, the total of 380 plus 144, which makes it 524, plus 113, which makes it 637, should be the same as the total of 222, 167, and 248?
Theoretically.
It is not.
And why is it not? Yeah, so...
That's an excellent question. Commissioner Keller through the chair. And I don't know why it's not.
Okay.
It's a mystery.
That's why I get confused. Thank you.
As, just if I may, as an example, in the original inspection with red placard, some of the numbers have changed. So for instance, the sheet today has 167 listed, but the sheet we received on October 17 has 166. And then the other category today is 59, and it was 58. Commercial is the same.
Yeah. So Commissioner Keller, Chair Newman, members of the commission, as I sit here pondering on activities that have occurred, sorry, it's been, it hasn't been that long. So one thing to put in perspective when we look at these numbers, and I would strongly encourage you, us all, not to get too seared in on the numbers, because if we look at what happened immediately after the debris flow, Building and Safety Division went out and started doing inspections. And it'd be important to just realize that there were some properties that they couldn't access, there were some structures that they weren't able to identify. And so this has been a process that has gone on since January 9, where Building and Safety has been able to get more access to properties. So there's other structures that have been identified and found. So that's why there's a little, I'm solving that mystery as I sit here, why there's a difference in numbers. So when you look at that one column, it's...
There isn't.
Oh.
There isn't. I just did the math. There is no difference in number. They both add up to 637. The 61 of total red structures destroyed is part of the 248.
So let's rewind this tape and just delete everything I just said.
That's actually more accurate than I realized, although it may not explain Commissioner Newman's change in designation.
Thank you for the update. One last question. Is there a legend on a descriptive of this, the possible changes and from green to red to green, et cetera, that someone can follow on your map? When you have all the little houses and all the little colors, is there, is there a legend that says, that gives number, anything like this?
Commissioner Sennauer through the chair, I don't, there is a legend on the map that just indicates what the structures are and what their tags are. However, I think that answer is in our frequently asked questions section on the website. So I'd refer people to look at that frequently asked questions, and that provides a detailed description of what each of those safety assessments are. And as things move between those different safety assessments, to understand what's happening between that.
And if I may, following up, at our last meeting, it was reported that there were approximately 25 requests for like-for-like exceptions as of October. Could you update us and give us a sense of how many exceptions have been sought for like-for-like to date?
Chair Newman through, yeah, through the chair.
Awkward as that may sound.
So that was super awkward. I'm glad there's nobody here. So as I mentioned earlier, the number of exemptions, we went back and looked at the data, and we have a clear picture of what that information is. And so since the like-for-like or was adopted or through this process, there has been 44 requests for exemptions that have been submitted to our department. Nineteen of those have been issued. So Chair Newman, so to respond to that, we're not tracking any denials. If they request a like-for-like and it isn't, it'll either result in a permit, or they'll come back with revisions to be able to do that. So it's not an approval or denial, it's a request for an exemption. So there's a number of those 44 that we're looking at and considering to say you may or may not qualify for that. So it's not really denial, it's an ongoing process for them to meet those requirements or apply for a permit.
And then also at our last meeting, you reported that there were 323 properties that were assigned a case manager. 290 were open at of that date. How many are open as of this report date? Is that 289?
Chair Newman, that is correct. It's 289 that are still open, and we've, there's been 33 of the 323 closed. And so, and then contacted case managers is 208, which is like 64%.
289.
That is correct.
All right. Commissioner Keller, you have a question?
Just one other question. Have any of these applications for like-for-like been referred to the MBAR? Has that been part of the process? Do you have any sense of how many might have been referred in that regard?
So Commissioner Keller through the chair, I don't have the number as far as how many of these exemptions have gone through MBAR. There have been some on recent agendas that have actually gone through the process through MBAR review. I just don't have a number of how many those have been.
If I'm correct in my recollection, it was that the director or the director's designee on the review of like-for-like applications was to consult with the Chair of MBAR, but that MBAR itself was not going to be reviewing like-for-like applications. Is that correct?
So Chair Newman, members of the commission, so the way the like-for-like ordinance reads is that the director can make the decision if there's a substantial change, and if there is, it does need to go to MBAR. And so there have been projects that were determined to be substantial change, to require... MBAR review. Those were, there's a question that it may or may not be substantial change. We have sought direction from the chair to provide consultation on that. So that's consistent with the way the ordinance is read.
Now, with respect to our agenda item, let's talk about our next meeting date and so on. Looking at the projection report, we are scheduled next to meet on December 19. It looks like we have only one matter presently on the report. Do you, is it known or anticipated by staff that the debris flow nets might make that agenda? And I'm wondering whether we should or should not have that meeting, if it remains with solely one matter.
So Chair Newman, members of the commission, as I'm aware, there is one item, and that has already started the review cycle. I'm not aware of any other items being projected for that item. The emergency permit would, as Director Black indicated earlier, it's under the jurisdiction of the director. And so the follow-on permit would not be ready by December 19th.
All right.
Thank you. As I recall, we did, in our discussion last month, we did discuss this project that's agendized for the 19th, the one. And I thought we asked if there was a possibility of putting it on today, or combining it with another time. And I thought the direction we got from staff was they would touch base with the applicant and see if that was reasonable according to their schedule, but perhaps I'm mistaken totally.
Commissioner Senour, through the chair, I think we did have that discussion last time, and if I recollect correctly, there was a scheduling conflict, so it was not, it was not moved or adjusted to come to the hearing today.
All right. Is there anything else any of the commissioners would care to say with respect to the next meeting, the agenda, or any other items pertinent to that? Commissioner Keller?
Last month also, I had spoken to Commissioner, to Chair Cole, about getting a report from the Resiliency Committee, and I had understood that that might occur, that this would occur this meeting. And even though the debris nets are a director's decision, for informational purposes, I would really appreciate having a report as to the process of that committee, since they seem to be very active and are soliciting a lot of financial support from the community. I think it's something we should be informed about directly, so we have a chance to ask questions. Could we make that request?
Commissioner Keller, through the chair, you can make the request.
May I request that we ask to have a member or representative of the sustainable or communities, et cetera. And also, there was an article in the paper about the microgrids that seemed to have much more information than Director Black was able to give us, and it would be very nice, very good for us if we could be significantly informed about these two developments. Could we reach out to representatives from both of those groups?
So Commissioner Keller, through the chair, you can make requests for information. I can't guarantee that either one of those groups will be available or desire to come before the planning commission. It's a request, so just...
No, I know we can't demand anybody, but you can issue a request, and usually only the Miramar has turned us down. Everybody else has made appearances, so that would be very much to our benefit.
And I would like to add one other thing, following up on our agenda. With respect to the Blagden-Ricks-as-built demolition replacement, we did, as part of our action, refer the matter to Building and Safety staff for enforcement review and possible action. I know I would appreciate, and probably some of my colleagues as well, a report on whether that referral did occur, and what if any action Building and Safety is taking in that regard as to that matter. All right. Any other matters of concern to the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Move, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. We are adjourned.